Thank you, everyone, for coming to the Public Safety and Judiciary Hearing on the possible and proposed changes to our Vehicle for Hire Code. Sitting behind me is Devon Peros and Annie Marsico in my office, and we will be accepting speaker slips until 5:30. Speaker slips can be found by the entrance chambers just by the door. I want to first start off by thanking the following individuals for not only being here this evening, but for their work in reaching out to stakeholders and many others as we've moved towards these proposed changes that we'll discuss this evening. Starting off with the Director of Public Safety, Mitchell J. Brown, who will be joining us shortly as his schedule permits, followed by Assistant Director Amanda Ford, Support Services Administrator Ramona Patz, Assistant City Attorney Wesley Phillips, Assistant Auditor Molly Petty -- I'm gonna get that name wrong -- and other Vehicle for Hire Board members. Again, I want to thank you all for being here, and for those who are tuning in from home to this important issue that certainly signifies the growth in our great city. Again, your interest in Columbus's Vehicle for Hire industry is to be commended because it is certainly a part that many of us take for granted, but it is a part that makes the city go round. Modernizing and updating our Vehicle for Hire code has certainly been a priority mine for quite some time, and it has felt like a really long time at this point, and certainly has been over a year in trying to move towards a more updated and conducive code. This past July, we started off modernizing with our taxicabs, pedicabs, and many others, but all of our Vehicle for Hire codes reflect today's technology and certainly consumer demands, and with consumer demands comes the need for consumer protection. Around the same time, the state passed their biannual budget, one of the provisions in that budget allowed for livery vehicles to no longer be conducted on an hourly rate. This opened the door for a new industry, the mobile application-based vehicles for hire to enter the Ohio market, again, changing from limiting the livery vehicles from an on-hourly rate contractual relationship to an on-demand relationship. While the state had changed its code, the city code -- the current city code did not allow for liveries to operate on demand, which, again, brings us here today to continue to improve in this area. Following the changes in the state, this fall, Uber, a national corporation based out of California, contacted the city to begin discussions on how its Uber Black could fit into the city's Vehicle for Hire code. That timeline is extremely important to talk about, the changes are made at the state level, to how we find ourselves here this evening. In October, Uber presented its Uber Black model to the Vehicle for Hire Board, and certainly through numerous discussions with the administration and the Vehicle for Hire Board, it was determined that the city would draft new code that would not only allow Uber to operate in the city, but would also allow any other livery owner to operate on demand. And just so that we're clear, at the beginning of these discussions, my office has been a part of that discussion, don't want anyone to assume we have representation on the Vehicle for Hire Board, that informs my office and informs me along this entire process. Again, this then meant that our current livery owners would be able to provide a more on-demand form of service for their customers. By requiring a one-hour -- by not requiring a one-hour minimum for booking, customers can take a livery-style vehicle to dinner and then order another black car for their return home, each time they will receive an estimated fare before agreeing to the trip. Also of note, in July, we took a comprehensive approach to changes in this industry, requiring credit card machines, licensing pedicabs, and increasing insurance for taxi-cabs. As I've mentioned before, all these steps and these proposed changes, looking comprehensively at all the vehicle for hires, requiring and making sure that public safety stays in the forefront of these changes, and increasing our consumer protections as we look at changes across the board relating to vehicles, pedicabs, taxicabs, livery vehicles, and the like, all trying to maintain an equal look at all as much as we can, but making sure that the changes are continually communicated to stakeholders throughout the way, and certainly making sure that they connect back to increasing consumer protection. As I mentioned before, these changes were discussed with the Vehicle for Hire Board on two separate occasions in November. The Public Safety Administration staff and my staff have worked very hard with stakeholders to try taking their input and arrive at changes that we see proposed here this evening. And as I mentioned before, that representation keeps me informed, and I was very glad to hear that during those meetings, there were some compromises reached to continue moving forward with this proposed code. As I will continue to mention, you'll hear from me several times throughout this hearing, and as many have heard throughout all of the changes in the Vehicle for Hire, it is about consumer protection and public safety. Consumer protection is an important element of the changes that we have here tonight and will continue to be a focus. As a Public Safety Chair for the City of Columbus City Council, I want to make sure the passengers are safe when they entrust their lives to all of our drivers. Again, staying focused on public safety and consumer protection. I'll start off by turning the floor over to Assistant Director Ford, and I assume Director Brown, if he's able to join us, will share comments later as we proceed through the hearing. Amanda?
Good evening, Councilmember Mills. First, let me start by apologizing for the director. He had a last-minute meeting with the mayor, so he will join us as soon as he's finished up there. But today, we come to you to present the proposed changes to the Vehicle for Hire Livery Code. While we realize we were just here a few months ago presenting a complete rewrite of these codes, this industry is changing across the country, and new options are emerging in the for-hire industry. As you mentioned in your remarks, the state of Ohio recently changed their definition of a livery vehicle, opening up the door for expanding livery services. This change has now put city code and state code in conflict, leading to different legal interpretations and causing confusion. While the proposed changes that we are presenting today are minimal, city and state code will once again be congruent and will allow livery owners to offer a black car service on demand. As this industry continues to change and more options become available, public safety must remain our top priority. It is imperative that consumers have access to for-hire transportation options that have been equally regulated to ensure that all drivers and vehicles have met appropriate standards. We will not compromise public safety to accommodate changes in this industry, but we will work together to provide the best options possible to residents and visitors in the city. So before I go through the changes, let me give you just a brief overview of the current livery operations in the city. Livery vehicles include limousines, sedans, SUVs, minivans, full-size vans, and shuttle buses. These vehicles are contracted in advance for weddings, proms, large parties, entertaining clients, airport drop-off and pickup, and other special occasions. We currently have approximately 83 licensed livery vehicles that may operate in the city. As you can see on the slide, I put we -- most of these changes will apply to the sedans that are licensed, so we currently have about 41 sedans and SUVs licensed. Per the current code, livery vehicles operate by contract only for a minimum of one hour. They charge a per-hour or fixed rate that is agreed upon prior to the trip and typically secured with a credit card. So you may have a per-hour rate for a wedding party, or a flat rate for a customer who just wants to pick up or drop off to the airport. And finally, based on the length of time the vehicle is needed and the agreed-upon rate, the livery owner and customer have a signed agreement outlining the trip. Basically, the livery vehicle operates in a manner that is pre-arranged in advance and on a contractual basis. As the director mentioned, the state currently changed their -- sorry, as I mentioned, the state recently changed their definition of a livery vehicle. This definition has always included a one-hour minimum, meaning they could not operate on demand like a taxicab, and a fixed rate per hour or trip, meaning that you were charged an hourly rate or a flat fee for a trip. When the state changed this, this opened the door for livery vehicles to operate on demand and change the way fees may be assessed. While the city of Columbus maintains home rule on this issue, it creates confusion for those wanting to enter the livery or for-hire industry. Making changes in the code creates opportunity for existing livery owners. They've always been limited to working on a contractual basis and with that one-hour minimum. With these changes, they can still operate in that manner, but will also allow them to utilize vehicles that were not rented out for an evening. This may also help meet the needs of customers looking for smaller financial and time commitments. Making these changes also benefits consumers. For example, my husband and I want to celebrate our anniversary. We're dressed up, going to a nice restaurant. Maybe we would much rather have a more upscale experience, but we can't afford to rent a vehicle for the entire evening to cover going to dinner and getting home from dinner, so this is a more affordable option to still have that same experience, but I'm only paying for the ride to and from the restaurant. And so it also provides some flexibility where you're not committed to time constraints. There are companies that have approached the city about entering into this market. This black car on-demand service has become very popular in other cities, and consumers want this service in Columbus. Our residents have used this service in other cities, and our visitors have used it, so they expect it in Columbus as well. In the end, public safety is our top priority. We have an obligation to make certain that we, as a city, have put measures in place to make certain that drivers and vehicles have all been properly licensed, meaning vehicles have been inspected, they're properly insured, and that drivers have been background-checked and properly vetted. And the final piece of this is enforcement. The License Section recently put together an enforcement plan to increase enforcement of all codes that the License Section works under, but will also focus on vehicle for hire. For those -- they will be looking for unlicensed drivers and vehicles, vehicles that have not been properly maintained since their inspection, and lots of other issues that we deal with in the for-hire industry. We will also be changing the placement of decals on all those vehicles so that it's clearly displayed on all sides of the vehicles, so that police officers, licensed officers, and the general public can tell who is licensed. We've done our due diligence on this issue. Due to the changes in the industry in other cities, the Vehicle for Hire Board created a subcommittee to address these new forms of for-hire options. In September, Uber Black presented their business model to the committee and provided an opportunity to ask questions and share concerns. The committee met again in October to talk about potential code changes and shared thoughts and ideas about the changes. In November, Ramona and I presented the proposed changes to the Vehicle for Hire Board on two occasions to discuss the proposed issues. After the first meeting, there were still lots of questions, so we scheduled a second meeting to provide some additional follow-up information. So we've had some pretty lengthy discussions with the Vehicle for Hire Board, so we realize that we may not all still be on the same page at this point, but they've had an opportunity to ask lots of questions, and we can still go back to them with additional information. So just a quick summary of the proposed changes. They will allow liveries to operate in two ways. They -- one, they can continue to operate the way they do today on a contractual basis with a per-hour rate or flat fee, but they also have the ability to be dispatched over a phone or through an online app on your smartphone or computer. So meaning that livery vehicles must be pre-arranged by making this appointment through dispatch or the app, and an estimated fare must be given to the passenger prior to accepting the ride. And so finally, the one thing that doesn't change for livery vehicles is that they cannot be hailed. So for example, you know, we see a cab driving down the street, we can at least throw our arm in the air and get them to stop. Livery vehicles still cannot operate in that manner. What these changes do not address are vehicles commonly referred to as ride-sharing as defined by the city code and the Ohio Revised Code, so we'll get into that a little more in a few moments. So now getting into the code changes to 585, the Vehicle for Hire Board, we've had to make a few definition changes. So the livery vehicle definition will now read "a limousine or an at-least four-door passenger vehicle not equipped with a taxi meter and for hire only by pre-arrangement, provided that such livery vehicles do not drive in search of patronage or park on any public street or place of assemblage to solicit patronage, not pre-arranged." So by opening up that definition, we're removing that one-hour minimum and the per-hour rate that has been typically required, so they'll have that opportunity to work on demand, as long as they're not soliciting passengers. The next change is "pre-arranged," shall mean an agreement to provide transportation by registration in advance of boarding from a specific location in a livery vehicle at an agreed-upon rate. Once again, we're removing that minimum one hour. So many may ask, what is pre-arranged about a ride that's made through an online app or dispatched? The biggest difference is that these folks are given an estimated rate ahead of time. So when you either go through the app or you call dispatch to have that vehicle, they have to give you an amount, an estimated amount for that fare, whereas a taxicab, we realize we watch that on a taxi meter from the backseat, but they're based on GPS coordinates and the length of time in the ride in the vehicle typically, so they will be required to provide that information upfront, so that a passenger has the opportunity to decline that ride if they feel it's too expensive or they're not comfortable paying that amount. We added the definition "ride-sharing agreement." This just defines what a traditional ride-share is per the Higher Revised Code and our City Traffic Code. So a traditional ride-share is Ramona and I live in the same neighborhood, we work in the same building or buildings right next to one another downtown, so we ride to work together on a daily basis. I may fill up her tank of, you know, give her a tank of gas every week, or we may take turns driving, but there's no -- it's not considered a for-hire vehicle. So nothing's changing about that traditional ride-share, and obviously, we would still encourage that of people. Next, the moratorium. What we've done is we're -- in the current code, we have taxicab and pedicab moratoriums. So we're just including livery vehicles in that, but that's not a decision that we will bring to council, that actually comes from the Vehicle for Hire Board. Obviously, they've had a lot of discussion about moratoriums and whether one should be set or not, but that's a decision that they will have to make and bring -- they'll make a recommendation to city council at that point if they feel it's appropriate. So we're gonna go ahead and put it in the code, but I know that, you know, they haven't really made a decision on whether a moratorium is appropriate or not at this time. The Vehicle for Hire owner license itself, the only thing we're changing are record trip sheets. In the past, livery vehicles have always had a contract to show for every ride, so if there was an issue where we needed to go back and track down a driver, or there was some discrepancy with a ride, we could easily go back to the owner of the limousine and get that information. But we're just including them in there because we realize that through dispatch, we may not always have that contract in place, or if it's done through an online app. So there'll be kind of be an electronic version of that trip sheet, but trip sheets are helpful. You know, if a customer has a complaint, it's much easier for us to track that down if we can track down the actual driver and all the information needed to investigate a complaint. Moving on to 593 under livery vehicles. The section that's up here simply applies to the exceptions for needing a livery license. In the past, allowing a business address of a livery owner to be located outside of the city has caused problems. Often, an owner may live in Westerville and operate in the city, but they see this number-one line up here that says "a business address of a livery owner is located outside of the corporate limits of the city." So the reality is they have to meet all of the exceptions, not just one. So we found that it's been kind of a loophole, so we're just firming that up. So the actual location where the passenger pickup must be located outside of the city. The driver only picks up those same passengers who were brought into the city, and the driver possesses a written agreement between the passenger declaring it's a single-round trip. So they have to meet all three of those exceptions to not have a license. So this is dealing more with, you know, we've got a livery company in Delaware County bringing a family from Delaware into the city and then taking them back home. They wouldn't be required to have a license. So our goal is really to make sure that everybody is licensed, that all of our livery operators are licensed in the city, so that we can ensure that public safety piece of it, that we've done our due diligence to make sure that the vehicles have been inspected and drivers are vetted. The placement of the decal will change, and that will apply to taxicabs, pedicabs, horse carriages, all vehicles under the Vehicle for Hire Code. Currently, for taxicabs and liveries, the decal is actually on the windshield, which is not typically seen by most people. So the goal is to put a decal. Obviously, we'll keep it small in size so that it's nothing tacky or, you know, would interfere with the look of the vehicle, but we want something on all four sides of that vehicle to make sure that it's much easier for enforcement, so that our police officers, our licensed officers, and the general public can tell which vehicles are licensed. Obviously, it's very difficult if it's just on the front windshield, if you pull up behind a livery vehicle knowing that it's got the proper license to even be in the city. So it's just to help with enforcement efforts and encouraging consumers to make sure they're not getting in vehicles that are not properly licensed. As for vehicle standards, we only made two small changes. It must have a minimum of four doors, so we won't license any two-door or three-door vehicle as a livery, and then must not require the movement of a seat or any portion of a seat to gain access to another seating position, with the exception of the wheelchair vehicles. This applies mainly to SUVs. A lot of them have that third-row seating, so you have to move a seat in the second row to get in. So the point is making sure that nobody's trapped in that vehicle. So if you move down one of the middle seats, you can't put it back up to accommodate another The fare rate schedule. Every livery owner and our drivers are required to verbally or through an app provide an estimated fare to the passengers prior to passengers accepting the ride. The estimated fare should be based on a metric of GPS coordinates and estimated length of ride. This is just clarifying. In the past, the livery code section referring to fare rates has been that they've just had to maintain a fare rate schedule with the director's office. So we're just defining that out a little more on how they can determine that fare rate if they're going to operate on demand. The grounds for permanent revocation, revocation and suspension. Basically, we just removed the one section that talks about charging an hourly rate, and then we added failing to take the most direct route or most convenient route unless otherwise instructed by the passenger, parking any livery vehicle at a taxi stand unless the vehicle has been hired for passenger use through pre-arrangement, failing to post and maintain the scheduled rates filed with the director's office for that vehicle, and then failing at all times to maintain trip sheets. So these are just pulling them in line also with what we require of our taxicabs. As we were meeting with the Vehicle for Hire Board, we continued to have discussions about the lines being blurred a little bit between taxis and liveries. So before the last meeting, I had just kind of sat down and said, you know, "Let's spell out what are the differences." So a taxicab, you determine the fare rate by the taxi meter, so it's clearly defined, and the rate is computed in front of the passengers. Whereas a livery vehicle, the fare rate's determined by either an hourly rate or by GPS coordinates and length of the ride. A taxicab have the ability to be hailed on the street. Livery vehicles do not. Taxicabs are required to maintain $300,000 in commercial liability insurance. Livery vehicles are required to maintain $500,000 in commercial liability insurance. Taxicabs must be clearly marked, so they've got a company name, telephone number, identifying information. Livery vehicles are not required to have any of that information, but they are required to have state-issued livery license plates. And then obviously, taxicabs may accept credit cards and cash, and livery vehicles typically only work through credit cards. So those are some of the things that we just spelled out, what differentiates the two, because we realize that they are operating a little more alike now. And finally, new forms of vehicle for hire. Obviously, this industry is changing. You know, it kind of started in California, worked its way to New York, and now it's finally here in Ohio. So online apps have become more popular for arranging transportation needs. They offer that option at a touch of a hand. I mean, we do everything on our phones now. I can't tell you the last time I even called the pizza guy. You know, I do all of that on my phone, and do everything online. So we know that our taxicabs have been offering this, and some of our local taxicab companies even have their own apps, or they contract with another app to provide that service. But there's more non-traditional forms of vehicle for hire using these apps to link drivers and passengers together. One thing I would caution consumers about using them, we realize that ride-sharing has become very popular, and it's not the traditional form of ride-sharing, but a new form of ride-sharing has become very popular in several other cities, but they are not regulated here. So we would caution drivers, we can't, you know, promise you that they've been properly vetted, that the vehicles have been properly inspected, or that they're carrying proper insurance. So we would just caution consumers about using those services if they're available. And obviously, it's something we're working on next. It's kind of the next piece of all of this. So we'll be right back here and very soon presenting more code changes, unfortunately. But consumers should look for that licensing decal. You know, the License Section this morning presented some examples of what they would like to see for that new decal. So if we had something affirmative, we'd put it up here tonight, but that's definitely something we need to take in the initiative as a city and really promote, hey, this is what you need to look for before you get into a vehicle, so we can at least make sure that people are getting in safe vehicles. So that concludes our prepared remarks for tonight, so we'll be happy to take any questions, and we'll move forward.
Thank you, Amanda, for the presentation. I do have a few questions or just some points that I think bear some elaborating for our listening and viewing audience tonight. I apologize for my voice, it's leaving me a little bit, so I need to rely on the microphone, which is not normal for me. Can we discuss in terms of when we consider Uber Black and distinguishing between that product line for Uber, besides the look of the vehicle, is there any other features? I noticed the, in terms of regulations, some of the back and forth, are there any other features related to, on the customer's side, besides the look of the vehicle, as to why a customer would select or use Uber versus the other vehicle for hire alternatives that we have?
You know, I think Uber Black has become very popular in other cities, and I think a lot of people expect that when they come here, to be able to get that black car service on demand. I think, you know, locally, most of our liveries are not using an app because everything's done pre-arranged on a contractual basis. So I think there is some appeal that you can get that black car service on the app on your phone. Some of the safety features built in, I think people like. When you go into the app, you can see where all their vehicles are at, and then you have that ability to say, you know, "Here's where I want to go," and they send you an estimated rate. So as a passenger, I have the ability to say, you know, "That seems fair, I'll accept that ride," or "I think that's a little too high," because it does cost more than a traditional taxi to use that service, but I can decline that ride, or if I accept it, I then get a text message back that tells me, "Here's my driver, here's a picture of my driver, here's his name, his or her name, here's a picture of the vehicle and the license plate number," so that I can identify that vehicle as it pulls up. So I think that's an added safety feature that people like, and they also will say, you know, "The vehicle's 10 minutes out," and they'll continue to send you text messages telling you how far out the vehicle is. I think it's a feature that people like, and it's a guaranteed ride coming to you. I think that's one thing that people like. So, I mean, obviously, you have to be willing to pay for the service, because it does come at a higher fare than what a taxicab would typically, but, you know, I think some people like those additional features and the fact that they can do it all through their mobile app.
Thank you. Here is my five-minute warning to, if you would like to speak this evening on the hearing regarding livery changes, if you would please turn in a speaker slip before 5:30. We'll be accepting slips until 5:30. The forms can be picked up at the opening of council, so if you care to speak this evening, please fill out a speaker slip. Amanda, I wanted to ask if you elaborate, and when we look at 585 and we talk about where and how livery vehicles can pick up passengers, later on in the presentation, you mentioned the actual more commonly referred to as taxi stands. Can you just go over that again in terms of what is allowed and not allowed with these changes regarding the livery vehicles, in the term, as we all commonly, the customer probably knows that as a taxi stand?
Right. That's what -- our taxi stands are designated for taxis only. You know, obviously, they can hail customers on the street, but taxi stands are beneficial for them, because it gives them at least a place to park while they wait for a ride, or in a popular area where they know they're going to have lots of consumers. You know, unfortunately, we don't have enough taxicabs in the city, so it makes it difficult for them, so we want to make sure that what stands we do have, we reserve for our taxicabs. They're not pre-arranged through an app or anything like that, so we want to make sure that we're accommodating to them. But the livery vehicles themselves have to be pre-arranged, either through dispatch over the phone, and they're designated to that customer, or they have to be arranged through the app. So if you see a livery vehicle driving down High Street, whether it's got a passenger or it's empty, you cannot hail that livery vehicle, whereas you can do that with a taxicab.
Thank you. And I also wanted, I know that we've had this discussion numerous times, you and I, but can we elaborate and share some of our discussion related to monitoring saturation in the vehicle for hire industry? And I'm sure that came up in part of discussions when meeting with stakeholders around moratorium. Can you share a little bit about that and our thoughts on monitoring saturation?
Yeah, you know, obviously, it is a concern. We have had a moratorium on our taxicabs for years now, and we increased that for the first time last year in quite some time to accommodate for the wheelchair-accessible vehicles. So I know that there are concerns on the livery side that, you know, what can we accommodate? Obviously, setting a moratorium in the beginning may not be ideal. If the demand is there, we need to make sure that the demand is being met on the black car service side of this. So obviously, it definitely needs more discussion, especially with the Vehicle for Hire Board. You know, they have a voice in that. They make the recommendation to council. It's not a recommendation that I make to you, but it's one that they actually make to councils. So I think it's something that they need to monitor. So I think it's something that they need to monitor and keep an eye on how many licenses are being issued. But also, I think it's important to have those conversations with livery owners and with Uber, and say, you know, what is the demand? Like, are you able to meet the demand for the number of calls or requests you're getting through the app? So I think it's definitely something that we need to monitor as time goes on.
Thank you. I have another question. My questions are, you know, just so that it kind of makes it a little, we've had some of these discussions, but I think it is important pieces to highlight for our listening and viewing audience in terms of the safety measures that the trip sheets will provide for us and for the Vehicle for Hire Board as well. Can you elaborate on that, please?
Yeah, that's what, you know, we've always required our taxicabs to carry that trip sheet with them, so that if I have a poor experience in a taxicab, I can call the license section, file that complaint, and they're able to track that ride down, so they can see where my starting destination was, where my ending, especially if I have an issue with, I think I was overcharged. It's much easier, because they've written that information down, so we can go back and try to get an estimate of what that fare would be. But they're also helpful if I lose my cellphone, and I think I left it in a vehicle. I can at least, I have a phone number, I can call the license section and say, hey, I left my phone, here's where, you know, here's what time I took the ride, here was my destination, here's who I think my driver was. But it's helpful, you know, with the apps, that will provide you who your driver was, so it makes it much easier to track down some of that information. But trip sheets are helpful for us just being able to track that ride down and verifying that Ramona called me with a complaint, I can verify that she did take that vehicle. So a lot of it, you know, is security for the drivers also, to have that information to help verify when that information's requested.
Thank you. I want to also thank you for the taxi and livery comparison. But certainly, there are comparisons of all of the vehicles for hire options that we offer, that some provide, that others don't. So it's not to pit the two against, they're just more closely aligned, and I think that's where some of the confusion we've heard from some of the stakeholders in terms of whether it's this or that, but there are some differences that are there with livery and a taxicab. So thank you for that comparison, but I just want to remind everyone that it's not to put those two, when each is more closely aligned, there are other options that people may choose to take. Petty cabs is a good option in crowds where either livery vehicle nor a taxicab would have any easier access getting to crowds, is a way a petty cab does have that ability. So just wanted to point that out. I also thought one of the important pieces that we've talked about a little bit in terms of the having the decals and the cabs having their name and all that on the side of it, how will we identify besides the decal for, is there anything that when we take a look at, so there's not a bunch of stuff on cabs that, on the livery vehicles?
Yeah.
That we think should not be there?
You know, we talked about on the livery side, you know, do we require them to put some identifying information on there? You know, fortunately, livery vehicles do have livery license plates, or they're required to by the state. So that is one identifier, that it's actually a livery vehicle. But this is where we think the decal will be helpful. So, you know, if it's, it's not going to be anything really large, it's going to be a somewhat smaller decal. But having that on also, all four sides of the vehicle, if I can't see the license plate, I can at least look at the side of that vehicle and see that decal, probably like on the passenger window or something, so that I can see that it's licensed, but it also identifies it as a livery vehicle. So that's important for the enforcement piece of it, is making sure that those liveries that do have the license plate on the back, if they don't have a local, you know, license on it, we can ask those questions and say, are they legally operating in the city? So the decals are important, and it's just as important for taxicabs. You know, the one thing I've heard taxicab owners and drivers asking for is they need more enforcement. You know, so, but we have to make it easier to identify those cabs that aren't licensed. So this is one way to do it. So, you know, when we had this conversation, it's probably not as appealing to the livery operators to have those decals on there, but it's, you know, the taxicabs were supportive of it, because they're like, we want that enforcement to get some of those cabs that are unlicensed and operating in the city, to try to get them out.
Thank you. I wanted to thank you again for the hard work on this, and again, all the stakeholders who stay engaged in this, because all those perspectives will allow us to address other changes that we may need to face later. So I'm glad people are engaged in things that we're presenting tonight and as we go forward. And I think that's the gentleman we've been looking for. Director Brown, welcome to the hearing on livery vehicles. Thank you, you're fine. Director Brown, I'm going to try not to rush you, but ask that you share your comments. I want to move the hearing into public testimony. So I'll give you a couple of minutes and allow you to share your comments.
Congressman Mills, from my perspective, first and foremost, I want to thank my staff, who have really done a superb job on this particular issue. The things I think that are probably most significant is the realization that technology is having an impact on everything we do today. And that includes this aspect of how we handle moving people around within our community. And consequently, we have to stay abreast of that, and that means making adjustments to our codes. I know we were here earlier and discussed about changes, and now we're back again. But the fact of the matter is, technology's moving at light speed, and we have to be prepared to move with it. So we have to make the appropriate adjustments, make sure that we're able to regulate things appropriately and reasonably, with the concept that we always keep the public safety in mind on how we are going to move people around, and that those who wish to engage in this particular type of activity understand they'll be held accountable. So that's the basic objective of what we're trying to work out here. So thank you.
And thank you very much. So I'm going to take, from presentation and discussion from our end to allowing the opportunity for public testimony, the last order of business today. I have received today two letters in support of these legislative changes, one from a member of our Vehicle for Hire Board, and another from a local attorney who's representing a mobile application-based transportation company. I'll begin with our first speaker of the evening. I asked if you have signed up to speak, that you consider making yourself easily accessible to the microphone. Please adjust the microphone so that I can hear you, and all of the listening and viewing audience can hear you as well. Our first speaker this evening is Mr. Jeff Cates. Mr. Cates, welcome to the hearing of proposed changes of vehicle hire board related to livery vehicles. Please state your first and last name and address and any organizations that you may represent. Mr. Cates, you have three minutes to approach this topic of the hearing.
Sure. My name's Jeff Cates. I live at 6152 Sowerby Lane, Westerville, Ohio, 43081. I'm president at Yellow Cab of Columbus and a member of the Vehicle for Hire Board. I've also participated in our trade association, learning about successes and failures of transportation companies' experiences in other cities. Under the guidance of City Councilwoman Michelle Mills, Assistant Director, Department of Public Safety Amanda Ford, and Chairperson of the Vehicle for Hire Board Ramona Pats, the city is doing a lot to improve transportation options for the citizens of Columbus and all our visitors. These improvements include, as some were discussed earlier, a cap on the age and mileage of vehicles, higher insurance requirements, mandatory credit card acceptance, wheelchair-accessible taxis, as well as adding the 30 additional vehicles to the streets of Columbus. Yellow Cab wants to do everything possible to support the best and most innovative approaches to improve transportation options. However, we refuse to do so by sacrificing public safety and/or creating an uneven business environment for those currently serving Columbus. I speak to you today to expose five inherent industry issues for your consideration. Number one, if the suggested changes are made to the city code, there's an increased risk of unlicensed, unregulated, uninsured vehicles servicing our citizens. According to today's Columbus Dispatch, current city rules are already being violated by companies using one of these new services. Number two, these apps are providing a new way to charge for livery services, by using a smartphone as a measuring device for fares. This method of charging is essentially acting as a meter while providing on-demand service. By definition, this is a taxi. Number three, by using a smartphone method for charging fares, at no time is a section of weights and measures utilized for the protection of the customer. Taxi meters are calibrated and sealed each year for this reason. Number four, to control demand, these new services are allowed to raise their prices during busy times and lower them during slow times. This pricing policy is proposed without limits. The pricing flexibility allows these new services to make more money than taxis when demand is high and stay busy during slower times by lowering their prices. Taxis are regulated as a public utility, and as such, required to provide the service to the entire community, including the handicapped individuals. These new services will only service owners of a smartphone with a credit card. We, as an industry, hear what Columbus wants and will continue to provide it. We have already provided the convenience of a smartphone app to the city. Twelve different local taxi license holders proactively address the need for handicapped taxis. If the city wants more on-demand service, isn't it better to simply offer more taxi licenses or encourage better utilization of the current licenses before we experiment with city ordinances? There's nothing wrong with good competition, as long as everyone is playing by the same rules. We all want the best for Columbus. Let's learn from Atlanta, Miami, San Francisco, and New Orleans, a few of the cities struggling to control these new apps. Thanks for the opportunity to talk this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Cates. It's good to see you again, and I appreciate your comments, and wanted to ask you to elaborate on two of the points that I think I heard from you, if you would not mind.
Please.
The first question, first issue you raised is the regulation of the taxi meter related to weights and measures. I may have missed something along the way. Can you elaborate on that point for me, please?
Sure. Taxis each year are required to have their meters inspected by weights and measures, and they're sealed for the protection of the riding public. And if a smartphone is used as a meter, how do you, how to calibrate to the satisfaction of customers' needs and expectations?
So you're suggesting that the app is being used in the same form as a taxi meter, yet a taxi meter is regulated and sealed every year versus what is the use, the app is doing for the pricing for the on-demand? Is that what I'm understanding?
A taxi meter charges by time and distance, and is calibrated to make sure it conforms to those requirements. And that's what the smart, that's what the smartphone is doing as well.
So I'm going to ask Amanda to respond. There's looking to be, you're comparing the calibration of the taxi meter, so there should be some sort of calibration in the app, and I don't know that that's the same thing, but I'm going to ask Amanda to address a little bit, because I don't think that they're the same thing, but I want to make sure that I address that point that you've raised. Okay, oh, Ramona, you're on.
I'm going to let her talk.
All right, okay.
I think I can address this by way of GPS. The apps are based by GPS. The GPS apps use an algorithm, and you'll see in the code changes, we're requiring that they have that GPS fare and all the information involved in that GPS fare rating on file with the director's office.
Thank you, Ramona. Mr. Cates, I'm going to move to another point that you raised that I want some clarity on. I think we've reached the clear, because I understand what she's saying, and I hope that you two do too in terms of.
Am I allowed to ask a question?
No, sir.
Okay.
No, sir. I'm going to raise a question of you, which gives you more an opportunity.
Sure.
I have another question on, you mentioned handicap accessibility and services. It appears that your comments were related to the, for a population, does not address the handicap population. So I make sure, maybe I heard your comments incorrectly, but please share with me and elaborate on that issue.
Sure. I didn't understand how the new services would satisfy the need for handicapped folks that might need transportation options as well.
Our citizens with limited mobility, is that what you're speaking?
Yes.
That may want to access the service.
Correct.
Deputy Director Ford, Ramona, either of the two of you care to respond?
We addressed this issue in the Vehicle for Hire Board and other discussions with the committees, and we understand that the livery services more than likely would not be able to accommodate limited mobility people, and we are asking them to refer them to taxicabs that have wheelchair accessibility.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Cates. I think I have your points noted, and I appreciate you for continuing to share your voice. As it relates to changes and proposed changes in this, I go into every legislation with the understanding that I am not going to make everyone happy, and there is no app for that. So I do what I can. Thank you very much, Mr. Cates.
Thank you.
Our next speaker this evening is David Herring, and again, I'm going to apologize if I've mispronounced your name. If you could please approach the podium, share your first and last name and address, and please.
My name is David.
State any organization that you may represent.
I am the operation manager for Acme Taxi. I'm also the driver's representative for the Vehicle for Hire Board. My name is David Herring. My address is 3422 Burbank Road, Columbus, Ohio, 43232. Sorry. All right. This has been an extremely passionate and heated debate. Like you said, we've been in a bunch of meetings. It's been this way in other cities around the world, major cities, from California to New York, like we've heard. There are many opinions, a lot of different cities, a lot of different entities, transportations. Miners follows. If the city is on board and thinks that we need this experience in Columbus for the people that are coming here, or for, like Ms. Ford said, to take your family out, or your wife out to dinner, then I'm on board with that. But I do not think that we've separated it far enough from taxis. The, most of the major cities that I have been in black cabs at or black cars in have a minimum rate, which completely separates them from taxis. The way they're starting now is more or less like a meter. They're saying it's a little higher, but it's not much higher. And it's more or less run just like a taxi by mileage and by time. That will affect us if it happens that way. I don't see black cars having anything to do with apps. We've wanted black car service in Columbus for years. Would have added it to our fleet years ago, and would have gladly added them to our fleet years ago, just because Uber's come, or anyone else has come that offer a service and say that they have this new fantastic service that it's, we haven't been able to open this service until now. We wish to add on to this service also and add on to our fleet. What was the other one? The only problem that I see with it, or feel that it's going to affect us as company, is if that minimum rate doesn't diversify, doesn't make the separation. Or if, like the handicaps, or the neighborhoods that Uber doesn't want to go into, end up being ignored, or being charged double, because it takes that car twice as long to get to that area of town, because nobody wants to go to that area of town. I don't want to see that happen either. That is part of our transportation need that I think the city of Columbus is running behind, and that we need to take care of more of the people that live here, and not just over-concentrated downtown. And I would definitely like to thank everybody for their discussions and their time, Ms. Mills, and Ms. Ford, and Ms. Pats, everybody at the city council, or at the license section. This is, like I said, has been a really passionate discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Herring. Am I pronouncing your name correctly?
Yes, like the fish.
Okay. Of which I like. Mr. Herring, I wanted to say to you, thank you for your time, and I'm glad to hear that it was a passionate discussion, because the worst thing would be no discussion. And so I'm glad that we have had some discussion and that people have had a chance to put their voices on the table, because that's the important part. The other important part is that we continue to make sure that, in putting, using your words, that we take care of our current residents as well as our visitors. And so as long as, I think, we can strike a line that continues to support our current industries by making changes that we know will help them continue to be more competitive, that will help them thrive in our city. Some of the changes that we've made earlier was in their interest, so that we could improve our offerings, which increases their usage. So we are making changes, I believe that, are making sure that we're looking out for the current market, as well as making adjustments to allow for new market. But making those changes that we made earlier in the year was about making sure that while here they can thrive, you as a taxi company can thrive, and there's opportunity there. The other thing that we do is continue to invest in experience Columbus, and some of the others that brings visitors here, that allows for a wider market. And knowing that a wider market may require things like credit cards and some of those other. other things, we're looking ahead to look together at how do we improve all Vehicle For Hire alternatives. So the changes sometimes aren't always in what seem to be the best interest of each, but it is in best interest of all. Does that make sense to you?
Oh, yes.
I appreciate your comments, Mr. Herring. Thank you. Our next speaker for the evening, and I know this gentleman, and I apologize, I want to try it one more time. Habtai Gazabi. Did I, I know I messed with the last name. Thank you so much for coming. Please assist me in pronouncing your first and last name, and state your address and any organization that you represent. Thank you for coming to council to speak on livery code changes. You have three minutes. I'm sorry I missed that part. You have three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Michelle Mills and other members of the public safety. My name is Habtai Okubaske. Habtai Okubaske. I'm president of Independent Taxi Association of Columbus, and I'm a member of Vehicle For Hire Board. I live in 7880 Orange Station Loop, Lewis Center, Ohio. Today, when I speak against the change of the proposal, I think it is an attempt to merely accommodate Uber Black to the city transportation industry without an objective study of the city of Columbus' need for more transportation. According to Uber Black to livery service through changing, accommodating Uber Black to livery service through changing the definition of livery and the way livery works will affect the entire city transportation industry. If we look at the proposed change, the difference between taxi service and livery service, there is only very symbolic difference. One of the difference is the pre-arranged pickup. The time is not limited. Ten minutes can be pre-arranged. A cab driver can be called in ten minutes to arrive in a pickup place, and Uber Black can be called through the apps within ten minutes to the place. So the pre-arrangement, it doesn't give much difference, the way I understand it. The other difference is taxi can be held by hand, but still the livery can be e-haled. From two blocks away, he can be e-haled. I don't see any much difference on these two. The third one is the calculation. Taxi are calculated by taxi meters, livery by, or the black car by application program. But in both ways, we use distance and time to calculate, the GPS system and the meter. They both calculate distance and time. So I don't see much difference on the definitions of livery and taxi on this change. This change will increase the number of transportation vehicles with the same number of riders, according to what I understand. For those who share the street in search of work, whether by application or by taxi, regular taxi, there will be less income. It will be either the new subscribers of the apps, or the established transportation companies or individuals that will just appear because of lack of enough income. Ultimately, because of this change, I believe the taxicab industry in Columbus will suffer a lot. That's why I urge the, I urge the city council to review the issue before the vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Please forgive me. If you would give me permission to address you by your first name?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Habtai?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Habtai, I hear your comments in relationship to the comparison. Can you elaborate, just so that I make sure I understood your testimony? E-haled being the same for both. Tell me a little bit about your comments related to that.
As a taxi driver, when I go down the street from high to, on High Street towards the campus, any rider can stand by and e-hold by hand. Likewise, any rider with the applications can say, "I am here, can you come and pick me?" And he will be picked up by Uber car in the same street at the same time.
Okay. So you're suggesting that the hailing of a taxicab is similar to requesting a ride from Uber? Okay. I just wanted to make sure that I was understanding your comparison correctly. Thank you for your time, and it's good to see you again.
Thank you.
I want to now offer an opportunity for Director Brown or Deputy Director Ford. Do you have any comments related to the last, I didn't stop in the middle before the other speaker, so I wanted to give you an opportunity, if you wanted, to share some comments. Nancy. No worries. Okay. Thank you. I want to acknowledge Nancy Sully, who's here from Councilmember Paley's office, who's joined us to hear about these proposed changes, so that you all know there's other council members represented in the room. I want to move to our fourth speaker. I'm going to take another leap of faith. Oh, goodness, I've met Jamie. Jamie, if, I'm going to pronounce it, Shafra? Did I get that right? Jamie, if you would please assist me in pronouncing your first and last name, and share any organizations that you may represent, and share your comments in three minutes or less related to the livery code changes.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Jamie Shafra, and I'm here representing, the current name is OFA, the Association of Horticulture Professionals, at 2130 Stella Court, Columbus, Ohio, 43215. We are an international trade association based here in Columbus, Ohio, soon to be called the American Hort. We represent approximately, we represent an annual convention that comes into town each and every year in July. We recently went through a bid process where we chose 10 other cities to look at, to compare. The process took approximately eight months of deep dive, searching into the communities to see what they had to offer. It is important that a code such as this is on the table to keep this community in the top of mind of other decision-makers, such as ourselves. Recently, we made the choice to choose Columbus, Ohio for 2017 and 2018. It is approximately a $22 million decision, and it is because of the advancements that the city is going through. Also, as a resident, it's important that some of the ideas that had been shared on a guaranteed ride and/or being able to identify where the driver is, and/or being able to see who my driver is by my mobile phone, gives a person affirmation that their ride will be there, and their ride will take them to their destination. Essentially, it is that we are in support of this code, the change of the code, and as an organization that is headquartered here in this community, that we are in the forefront of what is going on in transportation and how it has evolved, and this community must change as well. I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for sharing, from the both resident and visitor perspective. I will share some additional comments related to that, as I find myself in several rooms with experienced Columbus and many others when they're thinking about conferences such as yours size, which thank you very much for the revenue to the city, when considering and when we find ourselves in years of work bidding on conferences and conventions, and all the energy and resources we put forth in a bid, and only come shy because of a few changes we might need to make, and would hate for us to be in a situation where we're losing considerably to Indianapolis, Charlotte, the cities that here all the time, based on a few changes we may need to make to improve when it comes to transportation and accessing all the gems in the city, whether it's COSI, it's the library, you know, hosting downtown is one thing, but being able to access through a variety of options, not just one to get to Easton, for example, and that can be a critical part of a decision-making for a conference or convention. So I thank you for your comments this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. I believe our fifth and last speaker for the evening is Justin Kents. Mr. Kents, if I have mispronounced your name, please assist me by correctly pronouncing your first and last name and address and any organization that you may represent. The floor is yours. You have three minutes or less.
Certainly. Thank you, Chairmember Mills. My name is Justin Kents, and I manage public policy for Uber Technologies. My address is 1920 N Street Northwest, Washington, DC, 20036. So thank you for the time tonight. I'm here in support of these code changes. I appreciate the work that the Vehicle For Hire Board has put into this, and for the consideration of the city council at large. I'd like to tell you a little bit about Uber. We are a company, as mentioned, based in San Francisco, California. We're about three years old now. And the whole company was founded on the concept of how to make existing transportation providers, how to allow for more efficiency in the marketplace, and how to help them grow their business. As such, this has been a very successful enterprise, and today we are in 60 cities worldwide and 22 nations. Certainly, Columbus is a city that was very attractive to us, because as we were looking at the amount of demand we were seeing, and we're able to track demand by seeing residents and visitors attempting to open the app within the confines of a city, we were seeing thousands of people in recent months opening the app in Columbus. So that was the sole reason why we knew Columbus would be a strong market and one that we would want to be a part of. So Uber is truly a technology company. We help facilitate rides between the riders and the drivers. And how we do that is by partnering with local licensed, insured, and regulated existing transportation providers for Uber Black. These are the livery and sedan companies that have been mentioned. When we're working with these partners and helping to grow out the pie for them, and helping to create another option for people looking to move around Columbus, we provide a lot of benefits for the city. It was, you know, there's no more perfect example than the previous speaker. That's something that we hear quite a bit in all the cities in which we exist. Conventions, business travelers, different kinds of sporting events and things like that, they all look for expanded transportation alternatives like Uber when they're picking their cities. Quickly, I want to bring up one point that was made earlier, or one suggestion that perhaps we're not able to serve certain neighborhoods and things like that. And quite simply, we actually solve for that solution. We serve the neighborhoods where we're seeing demand. So if someone wants a ride, no matter what the neighborhood is, we're going to fulfill that ride. And there's no discrimination or anything like that. So, you know, in short, we hope you continue to pursue these changes. I appreciate your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
I don't want to take up your last 25 seconds, so I'll give them to you if you want them. If you're yielding the floor, I'll take it back.
Oh, you have the floor.
Okay. Mr. Kents, I have quite a few questions for you, actually. Let me first take the opportunity to refresh the timeline for everyone, that part of, despite your data showing you to look at the market of Columbus, part of it is that there were some state changes that were made. So I just want to make sure I refresh everyone on that, as opposed to you coming to a city. However, I do applaud you for coming and speaking to the city and looking at how you can properly operate within the city. I applaud that step being part of your decision. I really appreciate that. We try to work together and collectively in the city, and that's one of the things that makes it the great city that it is. We try to work cooperatively. I want to ask a couple of questions that were raised by some of the others, and one that's extremely important to me. And I would like for you to elaborate when I hear discussions about limited mobility. Citizens in our community, if you could talk a little bit about that, I appreciate it.
Certainly. So we're partnering with existing livery companies, and that, you know, it depends, if the livery company has those kind of options, that's great. Our app currently doesn't allow for a special feature for someone that requires those kinds of special options to select it. It's something that we've talked about quite a bit as a company. It requires a lot of technological development that we would need to do to get there, and it's something that our engineers are working on, on some kind of a solution. So, you know, it's something that we've heard before. We are looking for solutions, and, you know, we're hoping that those solutions involve the partnership of the existing companies who may have some unique kind of ways to work with that.
Okay. I wanted to state, I'm not sure if you're aware, but that was one of the major changes that I made, so that we can ensure that type of access for all citizens in our city and not some, but all. And limited, those with limited mobility is extremely important, whether they're visitors or whether they're current residents. I want to share that with you. And I'll raise my next question.
If I may.
No, you may not. I'll share my next question, and you can respond to my next question. The question I had that was raised in regards to making sure that there is, what, I guess the best way to describe it is controlling the rates and this estimated fare piece and not, you know, spiking rates or anything like that. Can you elaborate on that?
Yes, certainly. So we do provide the ability to see an estimated fare before you accept a ride or request a ride even. We have dynamic pricing that's pegged to changing economics for supply and demand. So if the supply is very low and demand's very high, we have what's called surge pricing, where we present the consumer a splash screen on the app that says, "Due to very increased demand," maybe it's New Year's Eve, maybe it's a weekend night that's really popular, something like that, "you may be experiencing rates that are 1.25X or 2X, the normal rates. If you would still like to proceed with this ride, you know, you have to advance past that screen." Now, that's really important to us, because it helps keep equilibrium in the marketplace for those rides. The people who still are interested and willing to pay for those rides are able to obtain them. And because of that fluctuating pricing, we're able to incentivize the supply side, our partners, to get on the system and to get out there and to do rides. So I'll give you a great example. If it were a very rainy, stormy night or something like that, obviously, people would want to get a ride home rather than, say, walk or something like that. And maybe there are some partners who, because of those conditions, wouldn't ordinarily get on the system, but because they know that they stand to make more money that evening because of increased pricing, they're incentivized to get on the system and provide the rides to those who need them. And then at that point, as supply matches demand, they lower back to their ordinary rates.
Okay. Mr. Kents, I wanted to stop between my next two questions and acknowledge Carl Williams and John Oswald, who are both here. They're sitting behind me. Carl Williams is here representing Councilmember Tyson's office, and John Oswald is here representing Councilmember Klein's office. Mr. Kents, my next question is in regards to minimum wage. Can you elaborate and speak a little bit about that?
Minimum wage? Just broadly?
No. As it relates to your fares?
Oh, excuse me. It is a hot button issue right now.
I apologize that I was not more specific, but I hope I've given you enough to respond to.
Of course. Yeah, minimum fare. So we don't currently operate in any markets worldwide that have an established mandated minimum fare for livery. It's something that, you know, we believe in providing the highest quality service at the lowest possible price for consumers. Certainly, that's something that consumers prefer. And so we... And so we, you know, our, our pricing is generally on Uber Black about 30% more expensive than a taxi, you know, as, as some of the discussion before was, was referencing and, therefore, we, we believe that that's sufficient and that the, you know, changing demand should dictate the pricing and that there's no really conceivable good reason necessarily to establish any kind of a minimum fare.
Mr. Kent, can you elaborate on, you talked earlier in your opening comments about working with and supporting existing transportation options that currently exist. Can you talk about how you see that going and hearing, as you, I'm sure did, hearing what I heard about some of the challenges and concerns with your company? How do you plan to work with some of the folks, the ones that are sitting here or listening or viewing this here in this evening? You talked a lot about how you've had that work in other places. Can you elaborate on how you plan to do that?
Absolutely. In, in markets in which we exist, we see tremendous benefits for our partners, the local livery companies that, that partner with us to use Uber Black. It's a service, basically a lead generation service. I'll give you an example. The city of Seattle has seen tremendous success and they actually commissioned a longitudinal study to determine the impact of the entrance of, of Uber and our services to the marketplace versus those of existing incumbent transportation options like taxi. What they found when they did that study was that taxi revenue throughout the history of our existence in the Seattle marketplace remained constant and the amount of livery cars on the road went up 200%. So what they saw was the livery business was, was doing very well. They were making a lot more money. Traditionally, these, these folks do business by pre-arranging, you know, advanced reservation clients. Maybe they have, say, three or five a day, just hypothetically, and there's gaps in between those clients. And, and typically, those gaps have basically meant no business where they're sitting there with an expensive asset and an expensive car, maybe waiting in a parking lot or something to that effect. And what Uber does is that it allows them to maintain that existing business and then fill in the gaps so that they can do, you know, the hours in between their clients, they can go do trips and make extra money. So what we see for our partners is, you know, an extremely positive return for the drivers of those companies. It's, it means more flexibility in their scheduling. It allows them to go out and make more money for themselves. And so, you know, that's where we start to see job growth. We see improvement of standard of living and all the other benefits that come along with it.
Okay. I have another point that you raised earlier in opening comments when you looked at Columbus and opening the app. So I, I don't want to assume what you meant by that, but is that where, say I had loaded the app and used it in another city, that while I was home, I was like, "Oh, I'll use Uber and try to open the app," and I couldn't and you could tell from zip code or location that there was a, a need or desire for the service?
Yes, that's correct. Those are folks who have downloaded the app and they, they open it within the jurisdiction of Columbus and the GPS recognizes that that's coming from a, a Columbus address. And that's how we were able to tell when we're looking at new markets in which to expand, that's how we're able to tell where the strongest demand is and how to prioritize. And we're seeing tremendous demand coming from Columbus.
And was that connected to the address of the credit card? You could determine that they were a resident or were they a visitor or is the data that specific to say that while visiting Columbus, we know people are using, or they're residents who are currently here that are requesting the service?
Yeah, it's not that specific. It's just those people who have registered and opened the app. We're, we're not able to determine which are visitors, which are residents.
Okay. If you had any of that data, I appreciate you sharing it with my office in terms of the numbers that you've seen in the time period in which you've seen those requests being made. If you wouldn't mind sharing it with, with my office, I appreciate it. And certainly, I cannot let you leave the, the microphone without asking you to let us know any additional information that you can share about your ability to accommodate some of our residents with limited mobility. Thank you, Mr. Kent.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate you coming to our hearing this evening. I think that's. Again, I want to thank everyone for listening and participating, not only tonight. For many of you who have participated in this process and have been with us through all of these Vehicle For Hire changes, I thank you and I want you to know that we continue to engage for the purpose of hearing voices. I am not naive to believe that changes that we make are gonna make each and every person and/or part of this industry happy. We will do our best to reach a solution that we know is in the best interest of our public, number one, for their safety and for their protection as consumers. And so we try to address legislative changes in that manner each and every turn and I have all the confidence in administration and working toward solutions that will improve this industry while keeping the focus on public safety and consumer protections. I want to say to the citizens that we certainly work hard to ensure their consumer protection and hope that the safeguards that we put in place will do just that. This is certainly our mission in, in, in public safety and I'm a proud safety chair and hope that we continue to make those changes that way. Again, I want to say that all the changes that we've made, not whether it's to livery, to petty cabs or to taxi cabs, have been to make improvements in this industry so that we all can move and grow as the city changes. I know that in, in industries, whether it's politics or in a nonprofit world, industry changes have come about. They've not always been the changes that I've liked. I've seen some changes that have impacted people in very positive ways. And I want to say that as technology takes a lead in a lot of areas in our lives, we, we have to make use of it and try to make sure that it can certainly work in our benefit. It is here. It certainly can help us in terms of efficiencies. Here at council, we've moved to e-council. It has certainly allowed for cost savings and some efficiencies on the council side. So experiencing change is, is not always easy, but we want the city to be around and be around in a very strong way and that means that we must, again, adapt. I cannot say enough about how impactful transportation is on our bids and solicitation of conventions and conferences to this city. It is a, a topic that comes up. Hotel rooms, transportation, those are major things that get in our way in terms of leveraging business. And when we leverage the level of business, I have the faith in experienced Columbus and certainly the sports commission that they're going after and will have the ability to leverage, it will make our entire city better. Those dollars will certainly make sure that safety net services as well as neighborhood services and all is provided to our citizens. And if we're committed to making sure all those basic things are provided to every citizen, we have to make changes that will do just that. I was in a meeting just yesterday about trying to leverage more visitors to our city and hearing some of the things that are in our way when we lose bids and transportation finds itself on that list repeatedly. Again, the changes we made before, some people want to use the word fare, some people doesn't think it is, but we've made changes in every part of Vehicle For Hire that certainly improves the industry. This one may not be for some, the last ones may be for others, but all of the changes, again, are aimed at public safety and consumer protection and in the best interest of the growth of our city. I have heard some information this evening that I will go back and continue to explore and get a greater understanding as we look at some of these proposed changes. If there is any other information you would like to share with my office, please feel free to do so. We are always listening and I think our demonstration of coming back more than once in several different venues to hear about what these changes would mean to a lot of the folks within the industry. We're certainly looking to pass legislation going forward so that we can keep up with the state changes. As I said earlier, that's why we find ourselves here primarily, but I will not say that's the only reason for the changes. The other reasons I talked about is to continue to offer alternatives that allow our city to grow. Again, if you have any other questions or comments, please feel free to contact my office. Please have a good and most importantly, a safe evening. This concludes the hearing this evening.